Hi, so welcome everyone to today, May first, two thousand twenty five, OutTech meeting. Two oh three P M. So let's start with the welcome. Tom Yelly.
I am here.
And Sierra Foster.
Present.
Okay, and City Manager Mike Gonzalez is also here. Do we have a corner? Um, I know there's no section here for for public comment, then we did get an email from Britten Moore, she would like to share a few words. I think everybody was uh.
Said I'm was.
Don't want that? I'll read it and I'll forward it to you. Okay, let's start with. Dear Mr. City Manager Mike Gonzalez and OutTech Board, due to scheduling conflicts, the Lighted Farm Implement Parade Committee cannot see you in person today. We did hope everyone to update you on the progress thus so far. If you could read this to the board, we would be very appreciative. We are very excited about this year's F I P and will be happy to update you along the way. We thought that since New Time Rotary Op, uh, the invol- involvement in it, was a good opportunity for another group to take on some downtown activities. So there's an update.
Uh, may I add, um, Ro- New Time Rotary has not yet opted out of any involvement? Oh, we are discussing it so further, we just received a copy of the scope of work from the city manager. Um, Mike Gonzalez here a little bit ago, and so we have it on the schedule for our Board of Directors meeting on May 3.
May talk, alright. So you'll just keep us up to date on that?
Yeah.
Um, let's continue with the update, first informal meeting was March fifth. With the city manager confirmed parade plans for two thousand twenty five. First formal team meeting is set for Wednesday, June eighteen at eight, eight A M. Person invitations will be sent out to all past applicants in September, October. Biweekly meetings will be set with City Hall Streets, S S F D and S S P D departments starting October. Team meeting will be done weekly up until the event day. Local cam will be filing paperwork for a five oh one C three this spring. We'll reach out to A N E for airing Christmas sho- showcase in Sunnyside, so we can promote the event on November and December. We will secure a local farming business to sponsor our trophies for two thousand twenty five. Carter was able to get special trophies in labor. Where we can put a picture of the winners on the personal trophies. Working on a few fertilizer companies and track dealers to become sponsors and be recognized for their work in our valley. New plans for grand prize, they re- they receive a customized Yeti cooler with their farm name and logo. First one was done in two thousand twenty four, we're buying tech. Starting process to trademark this event. Alright, so thank you, Brett Moore for the update. Yeah, man, it is good, good update. Uh, anybody online wishes to do provide comment, I don't see anybody. I think that's Jackie. Yeah.
So I have a question, just clarification, trying to remember, the lighted farm implement parade is a big venture between two groups, is that correct?
So, uh, the Sunnyside Noon Rotary was presented with an OutTech agreement for the Lighted Farm Implement Parade supporting market activities. And so we received the scope of work of what that would entail. Three weeks ago maybe, it was right after our last Board of Directors meeting, so we haven't had an opportunity now to digest that and then vote as a club on if we're going to do that or not, because it's a modification from our original.
So the parade itself is Carter.
Yeah, it was ordered to Carter, Killian's, Ben, um, what was the groups? It had a, I don't know, a room name.
Very cozy, the way between him and the Rotary, Carter, if it made rape.
I'm sorry, I don't have any, you know.
But there are two parties, we're talking about splitting this whole group, yes.
Yeah, um, yes, and, um, both parties, and you can add to this, but both parties met with, um, city manager, Mike here to talk about what that entailed and what it would look like and how it would work and over the past, since that conversation with OutTech went, so.
Yeah, and it was, I think the decision has to be made as to, it sounds like Carter's gonna kind of organize the parade itself and what Rotary will do like on the periphery, you know, around the gazebo areas and things like that, so. But to work fully together in a certain sense, and just, I think the main, the main issue is to make sure, you know, the right hand knows what the left hand is doing. You know, they're working together collectively, so it's not a contentious thing, it's probably just who knows what and, you know, just being clear.
It's a collaborative effort.
Yeah, exactly, so I don't want anybody to think it was a measure of, it's, it's a.
Alright, well, we'll move on to active agenda, two thousand twenty four J L R report discussion. Do you wanna explain what J L R reporting is and deadlines and what we had on there?
Let me, I have something, let me print something, let me run it in my office real quick, because I had.
I have, I have a little, I mean, I have the, the, the due date, due date is May fifteenth, without J L R reporting.
It's okay, let me, let me run real quick and just see something real quick, because I, I had something on my little bench shelf.
In the long period of time, J L R. I remember what it stands for. It's an annual reporting for all these, um.
Is it the reporting of the estimated, it's that each acting entities have received funding in the five twenty four.
Yeah, may we report the numbers and then grab that information, those different programs of the different organizers reported to the city.
Or that was what it was saying.
Yeah. So those reports are available online on the, on the website and you can go back, you know, all these years and look at different cities, what they do and there's. Uh, in the meantime, we can go to minutes, approved minutes of the following meetings. July twelfth, two thousand twenty four special meeting, October thirtieth, two thousand twenty four special meeting, January thirteenth, two thousand twenty five special meeting.
Yes.
Yeah, um, yes, and, um, both parties, and you can add to this, but both parties met with, um, city manager, Mike here to talk about what that entailed and what it would look like and how it would work and over the past, since that conversation with OutTech went, so.
Yeah, and it was, I think the decision has to be made as to, it sounds like Carter's gonna kind of organize the parade itself and what Rotary will do like on the periphery, you know, around the gazebo areas and things like that, so. But to work fully together in a certain sense, and just, I think the main, the main issue is to make sure, you know, the right hand knows what the left hand is doing. You know, they're working together collectively, so it's not a contentious thing, it's probably just who knows what and, you know, just being clear.
It's a collaborative effort.
Yeah, exactly, so I don't want anybody to think it was a measure of, it's, it's a.
Alright, well, we'll move on to active agenda, two thousand twenty four J L R report discussion. Do you wanna explain what J L R reporting is and deadlines and what we had on there?
Let me, I have something, let me print something, let me run it in my office real quick, because I had.
I have, I have a little, I mean, I have the, the, the due date, due date is May fifteenth, without J L R reporting.
It's okay, let me, let me run real quick and just see something real quick, because I, I had something on my little bench shelf.
In the long period of time, J L R. I remember what it stands for. It's an annual reporting for all these, um.
Is it the reporting of the estimated, it's that each acting entities have received funding in the five twenty four.
Yeah, may we report the numbers and then grab that information, those different programs of the different organizers reported to the city.
Or that was what it was saying.
Yeah. So those reports are available online on the, on the website and you can go back, you know, all these years and look at different cities, what they do and there's. Uh, in the meantime, we can go to minutes, approved minutes of the following meetings. July twelfth, two thousand twenty four special meeting, October thirtieth, two thousand twenty four special meeting, January thirteenth, two thousand twenty five special meeting.
So where's the meeting in November?
Definitely.
Uh, because where's the one where we approved the, um, Lighted Farm Implement Parade stuff?
Was it part of the previous, I don't have the previous, um.
Because I think there was another meeting in Nov- um, November here in between the one on October thirtieth to the one on Thursday, January thirteenth, for Thanksgiving. I was just thinking I could find the name of the entity that was. Sorry, the other minutes though, to interrupt, you asked for a motion, I would make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the following meeting in July twelfth, twenty twenty four, October thirtieth, twenty twenty four, and January thirteenth, twenty twenty five as presented.
I had some specifics on that. Do you want me to give, uh, kind of like a nutshell, J L R reporting for the state?
Yeah, then we're doing the minutes real quick.
Okay, we'll go back to the shirt.
We're missing a pretty important set of meetings, aren't we? I'll check with Jackie afterwards on that November, it might be one that, the minutes we approved last time, but it could be wrong. We can always bring back, uh, those meetings for next year. Yeah, because I guess you keep a lot of things that won't be.
Because we, we did make these initial recommendations for five oh nine insanity with the understanding that we would have the completed application submitted before the next meeting, and then that didn't happen, so it puts a story together to have the two.
So there is one, so there is one missing there, but I would like, like I said, I'll check with Jackie, but right now we're approving these states. Well, I will second your motion. Okay, I have a motion by Sierra and a second by Tom, approved the minutes as presented. Uh, any discussion? There are none. Sierra?
I.
Tom?
Yes.
I also do, I, yes, I mean, it was a basis. Okay, let's go back to two thousand twenty four J L R report discussion.
Sorry, real quick, do you mind asking, um, Jack, uh, Jacqueline when she's available if there were minutes from, not today, but later as a follow-up item, if there were minutes from November? I believe there was a meeting bef- right before Thanksgiving, I don't.
Yeah, I do remember that one, you were, I think I was at home, I remember that one, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll check on that.
Okay, so, Mr. City Manager, two thousand twenty four J L R reporting.
Yes, uh, thank you Chair, so, uh, for the public that may be watching, so J L R is, is basically the reporting agency for tourism, uh, and the Washington State Joint Legislative Wahda Review Committee. Uh, J L R, that's what that stands for, uh, they basically analyze, oversee, uh, how the tax dollars are being used, so, uh, they also have the reporting function, uh, that, that we report back to them in terms of numbers of, of people that come to our tourism events. And, you know, and, and essentially it's an analysis of how effective the dollars that we're putting into our marketing efforts are, are, are happening and they're being utilized, so. Um, it also connects to N R C W for anybody that, that's an R C W fan, uh, six seven dot two eight, uh, one eight, one six. Municipals receiving these funds must report their expenditures, which J L R, uh, compiles annually. Uh, it's important to note, uh, J L R provides a reporting framework that publishes the data, so uh, Jaclyn, our clerk, is the one that provides our data to the J L R, uh, folks, uh, at the state. Um, then, uh, what's also interesting, there's a Washington Tourism Marketing Authority, uh, so that was established in twenty eighteen. Um, so basically, they spearhead the, the tourism efforts and, and that's also funded a combination, public, private sources. Uh, they can receive up to nearly five million, uh, per fiscal year, which, you know, their efforts are more broad. You know, obviously, our, our efforts, we try to really focus in, on our area through, in marketing specific events and, and promoting specific events like our Cinco de Mayo Festival, which Rotary does a tremendous job of every year. Uh, we're talking Hail Fest, uh, Sunshine Days, what am I missing, but obviously the big implement parade, so. You know, depending how that all kind of ties back, and Tom, your, your spaces are the litmus test of, if these events are working, if we have heads in bed, so it's all really one big cohesive thing, but the nice thing, you know, from a transparency standpoint, there is a measurability for the public with J L R, and that's really the incentive of J L R is, okay, are these being used effectively, corrected, correctly? And then, you know, how are they being used most impactfully, so? Because that, that is a question we get a lot, it's like, you know, how do we, how do you measure where these, you know, who's the reporting agency essentially, so? The good thing, um, for anybody watching is there is a reporting agency.
Oh, question, um, so I, I know that these organizations and whoever we hand out the money to, uh, I believe it's in the contract, am I correct, and if I'm wrong, they have certain amount of days that they need to report and invoice the city.
Yes, sixty days or, I learned this from Lighted, sixty days or the end of the year, whichever one comes first.
Okay.
And so for Lighted, we, uh, had very short time, but luckily, uh, Jackie pointed that out.
So, so are we keeping, uh, um, these organizations accountable and making sure that they do follow those guidelines?
That's a good question, Deputy Mayor, and I will find out, because my, my perception, you know, having, this been my first cycle going through, I don't think we've been as disciplined probably as we need, need to be, not to say there hasn't been reporting. Um, because I know there has been accountability, but I can't say for certain that, like, those sixty day thresholds have been met.
Yeah.
My gut tells me probably not, if we're being one thousand percent honest, because we have to be. So, but let me check on that for sure, and if we're not, we need to, we need to get up to some.
Yeah, definitely, well.
I'll add, at least from the utilizing perspective, it, the sixty day thing started, um, recently, I don't remember if it was last year's or the year before, but that was relatively newer before. Um, it was just timely, or certainly the language was slightly different, but there was not a defined time, and so, um, we added that sixty days, I think in the very first OutTech meeting, I participated in or something along those lines, because originally they wanted it thirty, um, and I advocated for a little more time. With that being said, though, um, uh, I don't disagree that we should uphold that timeline, I do, um, have experience in completing it by the sixty day mark, which is reasonable, so.
Okay.
And then, um, if we work towards how we manage these funds moving forward, it could then shore up the accounting aspect of what is remaining, if it or not.
Yeah, definitely. Um, anything else on this item?
Yes, sir.
And I believe it's May fifteenth, the due date for the, the reporting on that.
For the city to report.
For the city to report, yeah, to J L R, yeah.
I think it might come as a real surprise to some of these organizations that, uh, okay, they're billing sixty days. And it's under the use of the same.
Yeah, let's keep them accountable. So let's move on to item C, consider recommending an amendment to allocate funds to Sunnyside Noon Rotary for the Cinco de Mayo Festival for additional thirty thousand to cover security costs. Um, Mr. City Manager, is that, was that an item that the city, with new rotary decided?
Um, uh, yes, Chair, so, o- one thing we've been talking about internally is the best way to go about this. Um, we had a couple of roads that we could take was either we as the city request the funds and sort of bill ourselves, um, for the overtime amount allotted for police and fire to protect this Cinco de Mayo event. Uh, it made more sense to us for, to amend the Rotary's contract to basically allot them thirty thousand additional. Um, we don't know exactly how much overtime will cost, it's a guesstimate, we're, we're hoping it's less, obviously. Um, but, you know, give them that funding, be- because then that way, I think the reporting element too, it makes more sense that from a trackability standpoint for us to say, okay, bill Rotary and, you know, we take those funds back into our general fund to support the overtime efforts, which, you know, obviously we'll be tracking those. Um, it just, it, it seemed, uh, it just didn't seem as transparent, if you will, like, for us to take the money and then put it into our general fund and then, you know, bill ourselves. So that was the thinking internally with, with the police staff and fire staff, to just really, so that way, you know, the trackability is really clean, you know, it's, it's one event that Rotary is managing, and then this is another element to, because we certainly didn't want to put the burden on Rotary, because we had sent the, with this, the precedent had been set. We couldn't, we, I don't think in good faith, we could have gone to them after the fact and said, hey, you know, you should pay for police and butter, when they hadn't been, you know, during their time managing the event. Because it, it, you know, the, the prior administration had set that precedent, and I felt like it wasn't right, but, 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 uh, the nice thing is, OutTech dollars can be used for, you know, security measures at a tourism event, especially one that's as big as, as Cinco de Mayo is gonna be, yeah. So, so that, you know, in a nutshell, was kind of a thinking internally, you know, for that.
And, and I know this, this conversation came before council, and, and I think council's directive was, you know, just that, because it's, it's so late in the season, you know, it's, it just didn't seem fair to, um, you know, put this on, on, on Noon Rotary, uh, last minute, you know, I, I don't know, you know, that's thirty thousand dollars that I, I think they, they, they have or they planned for. Um, also, one of my other, you know, one of my comments during council was, if we do it for one, we do it for all, so, you know, if we do this, does this mean that other, you know, organizers, it gets opened up to, and then they can apply for OutTech money? So I, I think it's, it's kind of messy if, if we try to do this, um, this year. Um, I believe the council, council's guidance, uh, directive was more to, to see, you know, for next year and, and at least give these organizations a heads up, hey, this is what we're gonna do, this is what, you know, the city wants to do going forward, that we didn't know firsthand, um, you know, how much to apply for, and, you know, what to do.
Um, so I have a couple of questions or, um, comments, I do want to make it aware that, um, Noon Rotary Club was not um, aware of these discussions prior till now, or at least me as the president directly. I have not been approached by the city or the police with an invoice or proposed invoice even, or any further discussion on additional funding other than two camera trailers, which we agreed to for the event. So this is new, um, to us, as you guys have pointed out, it would be a new expense for the club. And I do also disagree with the alternative pathway that was identified as laundering it through Rotary and instead of the city just directly putting together a, basically a Cinco de Mayo security plan and requesting the OutTech funds for it, because then it's just directly, this is a security plan, if it funnels through Noon Rotary, arguably, if there were any costs remaining, say the overtime only goes to twenty thousand, then theoretically, the group, if I take myself out of Rotary, whoever the group is, then would still be contractually allowed to obtain the remaining funds, if it wasn't carved out specifically in language. Um, and then additionally, yes, I'd like to understand what the equitable, like, how it would be equitably done for all events now, um, because if we have increased security for any community event like Sunshine Days or, um, Washington Nitros or, um, any parade that's happening in town, or any, um, the Light, yeah, the Lighted Farm Implement Parade, would we also then build those clubs for the additional security?
Yeah, and, uh, those are all good questions, I mean, it's, but, uh.
But yeah, if we can also wait until subsequent years, that'd be great, because this is, I mean, the events this weekend.
Yeah, I mean, it's, and that was kind of, and, and I'm surprised at him first, with, with many times I've been with you guys over this, I know they've been over there quite a bit. But, uh, so yeah, so, um, Chair, are you, are you proposing that this year we don't do anything?
Yeah.
Because I mean, I, you know, I, I mean, I don't, I don't think there's any harm in that, you know, and talking to Chief Lehman, you know, as you're going through the budget, obviously it's a challenging budget year, that's why we're gonna considering this, you know, with, and talking to him, you know, you do prepare for those Cinco de Mayo event in your overall budgeting scheme, as we headed into twenty twenty five. You know, we're sort of in the position where we're trying to save as many dollars as we can, and if we can use OutTech dollars, great. If we decide not to this year, you know, I think we'll be okay, you know, uh, but, you know, I think, I think next, you know, the next subsequent years, we do have to really think about this being part of, you know, the, the process and, and to your point, Sierra, it, it may be cleaner, you know, and regardless of how we do it, I think ultimately, we have to think about that from like a senior standpoint. For us as a city, these are, because we have some giant events, you know, that require a tremendous amount of security. Um, and, you know, in this day and age, what keeps me up at night before these events, like, oh my gosh, you see what's happening across the country, and we have to take every security measure that we can.
Yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt, but if this is a, um, an aspect moving forward as well, would we open up or somehow allow other security entities to put out bids for the same services? Um, or will there, because there will always be some extent of our own law enforcement and fire department that need to do their part, but, um, you know, I think of a group, you know, like Allied Security, if they wanted to then try to bid, that they would do enhanced security for the event, would we also entertain those reviews for OutTech funding?
I, I think the cleanest way to do it, and what other cities have done, I've seen them do it, is the city applies for it, and, and they break it down to, okay, this is, th- this event's gonna cost us this much, this event this much.
Yeah.
And then brings it, you know, to the OutTech committee, um, for approval, with final saying of the council. I think ultimately, that might be the cleanest way to do it.
Because, yeah, because I, 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 I agree with you Chair, that if we think about that going into our, our twenty six budget, and just as a city budget for OutTech, and then wait for me to come, we as a city before the board, we have our game plan in place, you know, because obviously we have our, our two big ones, which are Implement, Cinco, you know, um.
And hopefully Sunshine Days.
Yes, yeah, you know, I'm, yeah, I know, I think so with you guys, yeah, and there's no question, I'm sure Sunshine Days is gonna be really great. Um, so, you know, uh, so we have some really big signature events that, and maybe we flex on, on, you know, a smaller event like Sunshine Days, that is not going to require as many police officers, because I think, I think we've had three at Sunshine Days, uh, you know, max capacity, where, um, at an event like Cinco de Mayo, we're rotating in eighteen officers at a time, you know, making sure that you can implement, you know, it's all hands on deck, because we've got road closures going all the way to. that he can implement, you know, it's all hands on deck, because we've got road closures going all the way to in one eight two and, you know, the complex road closures, so um, you know, for council members and, you know, the priority safety, so we can't skip on that. And that's just, you know, that's number one, so, uh, I think.
I think this this item, it'd be, we could bring it back for for discussion before we start accepting the applications for next year. Um, just because, you know, like I said, uh, council kind of gave a directive of what they want to do and that we send we have to send it back to council for approval, they're gonna kick it back down to us, like, we already.
Enough that I wasn't listening, but do you mind re-stating the, what council's directive was?
It was to to keep it the same right now, because the city, yeah, the city handles the the overtime for for security uh, for the events and then going forward, yeah, going forward, just making sure that, you know, whoever applies for the two thousand twenty six, they they understand, okay, these are the changes then.
I have uh, two thoughts I'd like to contribute to this one. The additional thirty thousand, is that just the overtime portion or is that the full portion? Are you bringing in extra people or are you just having people who are already on the clock today and work longer?
No, it's typically a a night shift has has three folks that are out um, max, and you typically have a sergeant and two uh, road uh, police officers, you know, typical night in Sunnyside, there's three, max four folks on the road. So with an event like this, we'll have up to eighteen police officers at a time, you know, during the peak hours. So and we're going, you know, really full board and um.
So so what you're saying is it's not just the half timing, it's the time and.
Yeah, it's gonna be, you're talking with the twelve extra officers that are, you know, they're all going time and a half. They're, you know, the four, the, you know, the three or four that's that's typically their shift anyway. Um, my understanding is that those that are, that's their shift won't, but there'll probably be some overtime in there anyway, because they'll work extra hours and because the the event will go at ten, eleven o'clock at night.
Um, sorry, um, the other entities that support with other officers, so like Washington State Patrol or do we as a city pay for those officers or is that coming, and so they like?
Yeah, so we we will pay for those as well, so you know, even even though they're they're helping out, it still comes with a cost. Um, and uh, what was it, and to address your questions here about um, the the, what do you call it, the security?
Third parties?
Yeah, third security guards, excuse me. So I know not a lot of municipalities and a a few that I've worked with, they will have baked into their code, um, like, per number of people, uh, like five hundred, and you know, for every like five hundred, you have to have expected folks, you have to have a security guard. And the interesting thing is, we've been exploring this a little bit. There is no mandated threshold by the state, like as far as RCW, that says for every thousand people, you have to have a police officer. Um, so it just, it really varies, you know, when I, when I worked in Pasco, we had a very stringent code. For every one hundred people expected at an event, you had to have a security guard to supplement what we decided was the best threshold for police officers. So we had a similar size Cinco de Mayo event. And the organizers, they would get frustrated because they, you know, the, we expected seven thousand people, so you do the math. And they had, and security was a huge part of, you know, what the cost was. And and uh, we we couldn't be flexible on that number, so they had, and it was at times tough to find a security personnel.
So it would be hard to open it for a security company, because they probably not gonna have that many.
Yeah, it was, that was the most challenging part of our Cinco de Mayo Festival, was finding that ratio. Because uh, you know, that, you know, on max, we were going ten thousand people. Now, you know, you do the math, we had a, you know, a hundred security, I mean, there was security everywhere, which was, it was a nice look, but uh, but it was definitely expensive, you're talking twenty three bucks an hour at times. So you had to get a ton of uh, support for the event.
What I would like to see is is maybe after the event, if if the city can provide a breakdown of what the cost was for the city, so, you know, we have an idea going forward.
Yeah, and and I agree, and that's something, um, Chair, that Chief Lehman and I have been talking about is is coming out of this year. Um, because it just seems like every year, the the need for security gets greater, you know, people, it's just the world we live in, to really flesh out those costs and so we know how many officers do we have, what was the actual overtime?
Yeah.
You know, what, did we feel like there was too many?
Yeah.
Because we've been, we've been looking at some of those ratios of how many officers are really needed. Because I think at our peak, we'll get up to fifteen thousand people, I've heard, in downtown Sunnyside, which is a massive amount of people. You know, so you you say to yourself, like, what's the right ratio? Man, I'm gonna, you know, we're going all in, you know, so that we're definitely, we're definitely gonna go higher, you know, we'll go higher than lower, certainly.
Gotcha. The second point on this is that, and I think this is obvious to all of us, you add this to the cost to put on an adventure and ask to put on an event, and it just makes it harder to justify spending the funds. Really does, because you would have to say, we're not gonna get their dollar back.
Right.
And that's another reason why I would be worried to tie it to the utilization group, because we already struggle with like leaning them off, I know that's kind of a goal of, you know, over the time as the event comes, becomes established being independent, independently funded. Um, and so tying it back to the group could make that goal difficult.
There's, I I agree that they do is extremely important, and we've had issues here, which have basically cabashed the event, which we don't ever want to see happen again, so security is important.
And I believe, uh, you mentioned the two, we're gonna have some sort of trade or slide with security cameras.
Yes, um, that is the one additional security cost that we were approached with, requested by the um, police department. They asked if we could secure um, three camera trailers that allow the um, uh, police officers to observe more spaces. Um, the um, Chief Lehman helped us secure two. The vendor he works with didn't have three available, but secure two is good, and so we are paying for those. Um, so that's what we were requested for additional security this year.
And do those have somebody monitoring them?
So they're um, freestanding, um, create, and they're powered by solar panels and then they're monitored by um, the police officers that'll be in like the command center area, so they are monitored.
It is monitoring, so it's like additional eyes.
Yes, yeah, and then also it is um, retroactive if something does happen. Hopefully, they can review what happened. But hopefully, it's proactive.
A lot of malls have those.
Yeah, they're just like the ones you see in mall parking lots.
That's good. I was in the Best Western Vancouver, they actually have a little one. Oh, I'm just pointing, I have a picture of the boxy, oh, really? But I look at me, you're parked in a parking area. Really?
Those four meter means we'll be out of the job.
All right, well, uh, there's nothing further than item C, we'll go to item D, Tourism Related Efforts Update. Um, City Manager, what is this one is for the update, right?
Yes, so um, under, uh, obviously the LTAC board, we went quite a long process for people who may be tuning in since the last one. Is uh, LTAC allowed the city to take control of, I think it was around ninety hundred thousand dollars worth of uh, marketing dollars to, oh, well, that's me, uh, to take control of our marketing dollars. Um, in February, I think it was February, eventually, that 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 happened. You know, subsequent discussions happened with council and and the direction was to uh, and what I told council was not exactly, was to find a company uh, that we'd work with to create content, and we have found that company, yes, Wosco. And we've been working with them um, quite a bit with Rotary and and already creating videos and and um, uh, marketing with video content for Cinco de Mayo, which I think they put out three or four videos already for Cinco de Mayo. Worked really closely with with Victoria, creating graphics and and uh, the direction on that. Um, uh, the contract amount was around forty seven thousand for the year. Um, and and I, my intention was to bring the contract. It's just been such a crazy day, um, and I can go print it off real quick, once this meeting's over. Um, some of the the things that we get out of them are three videos online. Um, content creation support, uh, they built uh, uh, Visit Sunnyside, which is uh, our new marketing, it's gonna be sort of our marketing platform. Uh, one of the things we were struggling with was, was working um, with, I forget, Yakima Valley Tourism. And having kind of stagnant content and, um, you know, magnet, which serves a really great purpose, but wasn't real flexible. Um, so for instance, one of the things that we've already done is uh, the videos taken off like Wildfire, we did uh, something up on Jade, up on the hill. And you know, it's reached like a hundred thousand people already, like as far as, um, you know, that type of of uh, opportunity that we're creating for uh, Sunnyside, so uh, the nice thing, like in terms of support, uh, they will also be here during the event to support our marketing efforts, so so the, you know, that that's part of of the elements of what they're gonna be able to do for us is not only support us pre-event, at the event and post-event, which will be nice, so people could be getting real time videos, pictures of the event, so so I'm excited about that and then you know, just the quality they're producing, you know, this this video, uh, anybody's familiar with Jade, so she's, she has a bakery, it's a baker at the front of her house and and it's an honor system bakery and and we discovered this and we shot like a minute thirty video that's really taken off across Eastern Washington.
Is the British Girl Treats?
Yeah, British Girl Treats, so uh, you know, and people are coming from all across Eastern Washington to come up to Sunnyside. Um, you know, so, so we're 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 really trying, we're really gonna focus on things that bring people to Sunnyside, like uh, for instance, uh, one of the next things we're gonna work on is is we just shot something at Marital, so we're you know, we're gonna parlay that into the Outfest. Uh, we're scheduled to go over to Snipes and kind of marry those things together. Uh, another thing we're gonna work on is, uh, there's a little bit of breakfast right here and uh, we're discovering that travelers come from uh, across the state to drink at the wineries. You know, and how do we tie that into, actually, Best Western, you know, so we're trying to take holistic approaches to how we um, get, you know, rebrand Sunnyside, because there's so many things in Sunnyside that people are surprised about. Um, and I think one of the, one of the directives that we have is to really uh, promote the culture and the food. Uh, I'm a true believer that our Hispanic culture here is our strength, you know, and our food is you know, if you're a Mexican food fan, Sunnyside is the best Mexican, uh, you know. Both uh, Chair and I can attest, we live in Phoenix and uh, the Mexican food here rivals Phoenix, I'm telling you, there's there's some awesome spots, so that's gonna be a huge part of our our marketing strategy and so, you know, I'm I'm really excited about the future, because you know, it's really gonna be a rebranding. There's really gonna be great content, and we're gonna showcase the the story of of Sunnyside, so I'm excited about it.
An- another thing also, the, I don't know, you guys have watched Roger Brooks' uh, presentation. Long time ago, two thousand eighteen, I believe, um, if you haven't seen it, go ahead and watch it, we, I I I I remember watching it a couple of years ago and then I just recently watched it again and and I was I was really, you know, blown away by the the recommendations, good recommendations and and the lack of of, you know, I guess the city's response in the past years of of doing any other recommendations. So I approached uh, City Manager and took a, took a trip with uh, Public Works um, where maybe we could start implementing some of these recommendations, like the wayfinding. That's gonna be one of the first ones.
Thanks, Public Works, and I think we were both watching it in the same days, because it, it was funny, um, Deputy Mayor said, hey, have you seen this video? I'm like, yeah, I was just watching it the other day, as a matter of fact. But I think um, I think we both share a wayfinding. We have some older wayfinding signs in Sunnyside that we could put in and we could rather move some alone, put others in strategic spots and you know, we can do it pretty positively, because a lot of folks know, but don't know that our Public Works uh, folks can make their own signs, so so uh, we we do kind of, we took our first jaunt around town where we could put it. And uh, we kind of, we do need to follow up on that and see, you know, exactly what would be most effective. But um, you know, that's something, um, that, those are easy wins that we can get and and that's something we're working on. Um, you know, uh, I don't think of what else.
He talked about having a central square, farmer's market, all those.
Yeah.
Bring the community together, put it in spot, if you can, and very concentrated, keep it on spot, and focus on that spot.
Yeah, well, congratulations on the funding received in the state budget for something to do in Centenium's.
Yeah, so so right now, um, we're getting up to close to three hundred thousand dollars for enhancing that and and uh, you know, some thought I was pretty sure to say, but you know, check and check and check and and the folks that I've worked on are really, they're like, no, it's solid, they're good. So you know, hopefully, don't bite me in the whole tuchus, but um, but uh, yeah, just so excited and, you know, kudos to uh, Deputy Mayor uh, Council Vasquez, Council Prost, we all, you know, with myself went there. And they just, you know, they knocked it out of the park and and you know, to build those relationships with the lawmakers and, you know, that it it was just a great team effort. Gloria Mendoza was awesome, Curtis King, uh, Rep Majares, Senator Torres, all those folks were, they really went to bat for Sunnyside, so.
All the local reps?
Yeah, they were just awesome, you know, so and that was, you know, that was one of those things where they came, that we were there and, you know, they're like, hey, what else do you guys need? And I can't remember which one of the councils, like, what about the gazebo? And we're like, oh man, that would be really great to enhance. So they threw that into the capital budget and, you know, like, three hundred grand can really enhance that with who knows, what we really have to think about the design, you know. So I was really excited about that and um, you know, on that note, so we're gonna have a farmer's market out there a couple of times a month, beginning in late June.
That's what I saw, because there's a lady that stopped by to give us information about that. Farmer's market there in my office, I'm like, okay.
Yeah, so that's something, I mean, to mention the council, that it's been going, it's kind of, it's kind of been going through like the uh, process stage, if you will, and kind of crossing over T's, adding other I's, getting everything ready to go. Um, but yeah, really good group, they're they're the same group that's doing all the recycling events.
Okay.
So they're really eco-friendly and focused on that, um. So it's kind of, they're gonna incorporate some of that eco-friendly in into uh, the Sunday Farmer's Markets twice a month, so when when they approached me, you know, they initially approached me like, hey, we wanna do these recycling events and I said, yeah, sure, let's, you know, go for it and uh, the great thing about them, kudos to them, they they're awesome with their permitting process, like, they're just great, you know, I mean, you don't have to chase them or anything. Um, so they, you know, they've taken that same approach and, and uh, you know, that the only, you know, in terms of like supporting them, that's something that we, through the LTAC dollars, plan to you know, shoot a little video with them and, you know, start to market that as that comes closer to fruition, so that's another thing. I believe that, you know, we can attract folks to Sunnyside. Um, and you know, we'll support them, you know, with getting some of that, you know, the the releases out to support that, because I'm really looking at that group as a real partnership and you know, they're, you know, they're paying for all the permits and just wanna be clear on that. And they're working with, the port is working really closely with them too, to with the barrel area, so I talked to the port director the other day and she wanted to know if we were supportive of it and uh, so I think that's another thing, it's gonna be really great and, you know, once we're able to enhance that area, I'm so, I'm super excited about that.
Well, it's it's a good, good thing for for Sunnyside, we used to have it, I think for COVID and just went away, so it'd be, it'd be pretty cool to see it back, it'd be pretty awesome.
Good, just to to put a period at the end of the sentence, if we started in this this agenda item, you have contracted with a company, you said, yes, Wosco?
Yes, Wosco.
Yes, Wosco, and their scope for work is to, is it doesn't include rebranding or is it just to um, provide? Yes, Wosko, and their scope for work is to, is it doesn't include rebranding, or is it just to um provide individual events and assemble? And project video content?
There is, there is rebrand, I I think for me, the primary is the is the content creation and building the library, but there's a rebranding component. So um, uh, Visit Sunnyside is the platform that we're creating, cuz what what we're trying to do. Is rather funnel everything through our city website and and through our city social media platforms, we we have created a separate. We haven't created the the, we haven't created the website yet because we want enough content to live there, but we're we're pushing it through the Facebook page. Uh, Visit Sunnyside, which Rutter's been great about promoting, I think we've got like three hundred followers right now. Um, so to really create our own brand in Sunnyside is is the goal, so we're thinking by. By July, we're gonna launch the the website, and I really need to do an update to council now. As as I just wanted to make sure that we had enough content where, when I bring it to council, they can see like, oh, you know. Uh, and the public can see all the great content they're creating, so I I think it's multi-phase. The thing that that we really needed here was just really great content that could showcase the places like Marital. Like Jade's, like the the Cinco de Mayo Festival and to to build that library. Um, we had some nice pictures, but. You know, from the past marketing company, but there wasn't anything that brought Sunnyside to life, if you will, so. That's what I'm super excited about this year and and the type of content that that we're creating and, you know, even. And I don't know if you've seen this video at all, um.
So they're not doing any print media, they're doing all digital?
Yeah, we're we're staying all digital and we're just, you know, we're staying and, you know, that content creation.
We do have collateral material.
Yeah, there's there, there's some, there's some of those brochure maps that were printed by um Yakima Valley Tourism. Those books, we have those. So just for the public, maybe watching, it's it's uh, it's our Facebook page, we're up to three hundred fifty-three followers, Visit Sunnyside. And uh, we've also secured visit sunnyside.com, which is not live yet, but. Um, so that'll be really what we plan to.
To develop a website.
Yeah, so and, you know, the strategies, we we didn't wanna have a website right now with not a lot of content on there, because then it's. Uh, you know, when we're taking the professional direction, um.
Did you tell them to shut down the Coming to the Sun?
So right now, Come, Come to the Sun's still alive, because we didn't wanna kill that just yet, because I, we felt like that would be counterproductive too and. And uh, and Yakima Valley Tourism's been great to work with.
So is that they getting paid for that, have they given that?
No, they're just kind of giving it to us, you know, so, yeah, yeah, so. And and, you know, like, like I said, kudos to John, cuz they've been awesome, they're they're still great to work with. Um, and, you know, they've been giving us all the content, you know, so there's been no. John's, you know, John's a class act, so, you know, I don't want anybody to think there was like a breakup, it was just, they were really good about it, um.
Well, he's, you know, the interesting thing about him is that I will never, I won't produce your event, so you never see him at the event.
Right, exactly.
You're getting somebody who actually comes to the event, that's extremely important.
No, it's it's gonna be huge, so to see like the real life stuff and, um, so they're bringing drones out Saturday. Um, and I'm telling you.
They get to do the FAA stuff.
Yeah, and they're all licensed, so, you know, so it's it's really top-notch and. And one thing, they're also working with Brandview, the same company, um. So, you know, I'm I'm hoping when when the time is right that we do some joint efforts with Brandview, but, you know, this this was like a, this. Give you a snippet of of the type of stuff.
Cool place to come for some, everybody, if you're from out of town and you're looking for a really unique, cool place to come for some awesome treats.
Georgia.
I found a perfect place, it's called Jade's British Girl Treats, and it's up here on Dayton Drive on the South Hill. It's awesome, so let's go take a look. Okay, so this is all about the honor system, you can pay in cash, you can use your Bendo app. And they've got some amazing treats, folks, it's delicious, first of all, but it's it's homemade and the ingredients, which is important. Garlic herb bread, I'm definitely going to get that, English sticky toffee, this English bread here is amazing, best sandwiches, honestly. But what they're really known for, and we talked to Jade this morning, people will drive all the way from Seattle for these amazing cinnamon rolls. And sell it out quick, and I'm probably gonna buy them all, so.
No, I won't, I agree with that.
There you have it, British Girl Treats, another awesome spot in Sunnyside, Washington, until next time, I'm City Manager Mike Gonzalez.
So you know.
Photo Jenny's City Manager.
There you go, but, you know, but that, that video has gotten so much play, like Jade's like, ah, no, I got too much business for you, so. So, but but it's been great, so that, you know, that's the goal. And um, you know, to find these little nuggets and the funny thing, that was our first shoot, right, and um. So we go, we're going, I said, what, what, and we just kind of, we're like, we're going out on a Saturday, right? We're gonna go to Jade's, I go, what, I I thought they were talking about like their friend or something. No, no, you don't know what Jade's is? And you're, you know, you're here, and I'm like, no, I can't, I can't. They just wait, so then we shot it and and like organically, it's gotten around so much, so.
And had her catered dinner one time.
Yeah, fantastic, super nice lady too, she came out and. We got there early in the morning and she said, oh my God, what are you guys doing? It's like, we're gonna shoot some video. Uh, but yeah, it turned out we're, the the video just did fantastic and, you know, people were commenting all over the place, so. So it's been great, so, you know, that's the kind of thing that that we're trying to produce and just tell the story of Sunnyside.
Be, before we go any further, um, do we, can we go another half hour to finish it up? Is everybody good with that? He didn't post how long we were gonna have this, so. So we want a motion to extend it, just keep going.
Yeah, we can, I can move to extend it for thirty minutes, but I can't do anymore.
Yeah, yeah, well, well, yeah, we'll leave it thirty more minutes, um. And like I said, we don't need a motion, cuz we didn't plan it last year, it was from two to three or anything, so we'll just continue. There's nothing else on item D, we'll go to item E. Lodging tax, fund allocation for new events, um, so this is a topic that we spoke of last meeting. Um, where we can maybe allocate, you know, a small, a small amount of money, maybe five thousand, whatever the committee feels comfortable with. To try to bring in something new to Sunnyside, there's a few events I saw, um, that used to happen, I think it's Ben Snipes Day or. I saw something online and, you know, maybe bring something like that back, um. But it's just an idea, I think, Tom, you you had something with the, an idea with the touch community. Just just kind of get everybody involved and and see what's out there and. Get the doors, start working on that.
Yeah, yeah, ice cream, that would, that would be awesome, we have dairy, you know, dairy goat right here, so. So, you know, maybe, maybe something like that, so it's it's the idea that I wanna continue to discuss, um. It could be something that for the two thousand twenty-six uh funding or application, you know, process, we can. Definitely advertise that, you know, if you have a new idea.
A question for you in the new area, are there any dairymen?
Um, so there's two rotary clubs in town, there's the Daybreak and then there's the Noon Rotary. The Daybreak is more tailored towards the agricultural business and the Noon is more tailored towards um downtown businesses. So no, we don't have any dairymen, uh, but, um, very close to the Dom, he's a pastor, but that's, I don't have much connection.
Possible for us to plant a seed with them, say, we would love to see some sort of dairy-related.
Event.
Events, ice cream contests, all kinds of stuff.
We did have a great presentation from the um dairy ambassador, it's a young adult, um, from Salyte High School. Um, so I wonder if that group, I could connect with them, that was, uh, she does some great type stuff and then also communication to the. Um, partners like Rotary and the community sharing about the dairy industry, so they might be able to help us too.
Was it the young lady that was to the award, the dairy?
I thought I seen around one point that she had the, you know, the meaning of dairy.
Yeah, they have like.
Yeah, something, yeah, I can't, I can't think of it.
But I do have the information, so I just wanted to speak, but um, I don't remember any. But I think that could be a good pathway, though, to get something dairy-inspired happening.
So I know the city manager, you're part of the Daybreak Rotary now, so.
Yes, I can, I can.
Are there dairy farmers on that, you know?
Two, yeah, they're, I mean.
I don't know what their industries are.
Yeah, that's, there's very ag-focused, lots of partners.
You might have to go through a little bit of sour grapes to get to, seriously, you should just, you know, a couple earlier, you know, you'll hear the polarization and just. Send and say, okay, fellas, you're really important part of this community, I would like your involvement, bye.
I think it's a great idea, um, I know we're, we're heavy into Outfest, is is our big one coming, so. Um, so they, they definitely take any, you know, new, obviously, but they definitely taking ownership and and Outfest and traveling more. Brew reads and getting folks involved, and I'll definitely mention that soon.
Spin off, like Dairy Fest.
Yeah, I love that.
It is huge because the.
It's like a windy river in the mountains.
Yeah.
Cheese ice cream, you know, shakes, a lot of products.
Lactose intolerant.
Oh, yeah. That's really sad, wouldn't it?
You could say, okay, what else is there?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
You know, the, the, you just said the, the, what is it, cheese zombies, right? Competition, right?
Yeah, like, like, roll cheese sandwich, cheese zombies, cheese zombies. Hey, you know, roll cheese sandwich goes great with beer from Marital, you know, so.
And I know there's a few businesses that have the cheese zombies, I mean.
Well, I think we should, I mean, honestly, in a town that is so tied to the dairy industry, we should all, you know, that dairy space if we can.
A case idea, this day.
There you go.
Kind of stuff.
Yes.
Who goes to dairy?
Oh, dairy cheese fest. Um, well, another idea, I was, I was thinking about this, cuz not too long ago, I took a tour of Yakima Chief Hops. And um, and it was the same day we took a a visit over to Hop's Farm. And and I don't know how we as LTAC could support this, if if someone would have to have a five A and C three or just a group of people. I've, you know, I was thinking about this the other day, could you, could you do like a? Hops tour, Yakima Valley Chiefs tour, and then you ended at Varitals with drinking, you know, you go from field. To production, to the actual drinking.
And motorcycle.
Entertainment, yeah, wouldn't that, that'd be a cool tour, cuz I would take that, cuz I was. I was super fascinated by the Hop's farm and just how that process went, how they got the bail, and then how it goes. If anybody hasn't been to Yakima Chief Hops, that was the most fascinating, it's like a science lab. Um, and then going to Varitals, I thought, what an, what an awesome tour, if we can set that up somehow. And um.
You know, uh.
Cuz they would, they, it's right, like, let's say you did two of them, a morning one and then an afternoon one.
You go after, if it's whether it's a a classroom reunion or it's a car club or whatever. They come here, say, here's your agenda, in the morning, you're getting breakfast here, they're gonna go here, you do their work for them.
Yeah.
And they will say, yes, because they have to do anything, they show up.
Right, it's a, don't they, don't they call it like a poker room?
That's one name.
One name.
If you can, if you, what I have discovered is if you were willing to do the work or to organize, they'll bring the group to you. But you have to do, like, this, this is what you're gonna do while you're here, then you have a salad. I used, I went to uh Mill Mills Farms and walked through their tour this morning. That's something, okay, I have a mushroom. I don't know if you even, anybody didn't pay any attention, but they do out there, but it's unbelievable, and you wanna talk about science? Same thing, um, science with uh compost and mold.
Yeah, we took, we took the tour.
Sure.
Yeah, we took the tour a few months ago, were you there?
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't make that tour, no.
Usually myself and the mayor and a couple councils, we took the the tour and.
But we have a lot of jewels here.
We do.
And and they, I know, would love to play ball with the community.
I think they would, I, you know, I have to, lease over there is really nice, so, you know. But I thought about, I wanted to run this, I wanted to run a through this board and see what they thought and, you know, you know, get the, at least get the spark going and maybe it turns into a plane.
So it doesn't have to be a nonprofit, so we we could, we funded for-profit before.
I don't think LTAC, you could fund.
A and A, A and A was for-profit.
He might have been on the wrong side of the fence there.
Can we get clarification from?
Clarification.
That is, I think.
Legal counsel on if it has to be a five A and C three or, but, um. I like the idea, so you, this line, I know, E is to have a specific set of funds that would be for new events, when we open up.
Incubator.
And I like that a lot, cuz I think we can have a lot of creative ideas, but if we just share that out in the community. That we're trying to bring new events here, be interesting to see what people come back with, what the community comes back with.
Cuz there's, you know, I I've seen also too, like with our two tasting rooms. I've seen wine and taco tours also, you know, with with our amazing tacos here and then, you know, you could, you could easily hit. You know, our two tasting rooms and then, you know, go to your favorite taco spot, and. So, I mean, there there's those kind of, I think there's those kind of opportunities, especially with us being such a gateway between um. Seattle, Spokane, you know, and when we were over at Varitals. Uh, we were talking with the owner and, you know, he was, he was telling us, a lot of people will stop in, cuz they're such a, you know, kind of iconic. Spot for beer, you know, the beer lovers will stop here. You know, at times, if they're late, they'll, you know, they'll stay in your hotel, drink some beer, you know, hit the road and. So, yeah, so we, and and that's, I think sometimes we forget in Sunnyside, we're like a, we're we're just a real stopping ground for a lot of people. And uh, you know, the people that know our little gems, they'll stop in for them, but, and I think it's just a matter of us really highlighting them. You know, just getting the video, doing that, making sure people know about it, and um. So, yeah, so, I mean, like, again, I'm just so excited to start really focusing on the gems that we have.
So what are we thinking the good amount to, I mean?
I would like to remove them for ten thousand dollars.
Ten thousand?
And you can get it.
Okay, well, I have a motion, ten thousand dollars and incubator fund. At the second.
Awesome, yeah, yes, awesome.
Is on, and, and Chair and um, and members, are we thinking? And I'm just thinking, best case scenario, let's say. Somebody's watching this and gets excited, and it's like, I'm gonna try that, the, you know, the Hop's tour during, you know, when Hop's in late September or something.
Would, this would be for two thousand.
I'll see you next year, okay, I just wanted to be clear.
Yeah, cuz we, right now, we only have it open once a year, unless the committee wants to change it up. But that's for a different discussion, different day, but for now, I have a motion and a second to allocate ten thousand dollars to incubator fund for new events. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Also, well, aye, all opposed, no? Ayes have it, motion passes, so. People out there, you know, and like, see this video later on, or maybe we could, you know, put something out there on the, on our city website. Mr. City Manager, just kind of planting that seed for somebody that wants to prepare for, you know, for next year. Definitely, let's, let's get it going. So moving on to item F, uh lodging tax increase discussion, um. So this is a conversation also that we started uh last meeting and LTAC. Has the ability to to go about it different ways, um. We could uh do an additional two percent hotel motel tax, but I believe it was sixty percent of the hotels, right, I have to agree.
So are you talking uh in terms of promotion area or?
That's a different one, so tourism promotion area, it's it's a different.
You just started mentioning LTAC.
Oh, I wanted to talk about both of them. So I don't know what, you know, you're in the business, so what's the best route?
It, it's transparent to most people, you quote your roommate, and when you actually get the bills higher and. It's all the eight, there's taxes and assessments and all that sort of thing, and, you know, like a year, go to Washington DC where you get three hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Say four fifty, by the time all is said and done, until one night, so it's, that's just what it works.
So I I know, I know Proster has a a TPA, right?
Yes.
And how, has that affected, I guess, the states and the?
Well, what it does is it gives them, funds that can be used, A, with for-profit agencies. And um, it gives them one money, basically, to spend on advertising, this tourism promotion area fund, they're, they're pretty specific as to how they can spend. That they can be awarded to anybody.
And that TPA is a, it's it's, it's just a. And that T P A is a, it's, it's, it's just a basic rate, correct, per night?
We did, we did two dollars a room night, I think it was. It's less than that, if if the room rate was less than seventy dollars a night, it might have been a buck or maybe fifty cents, I have to go back and ask the look, cause there's a, this is our B market. Our B market, we sold it, and generated some steakers, but we didn't wanna zing that, sound out with somebody who won't manage a little hotel.
Okay.
So.
And just some context, do we currently have a T P A or no?
No.
So this would be creative, so and then what is the current LTAC rate? So if we're increasing it two percent, is it going to or from?
Two, two percent. Two percent.
So it'd be going to four, so definitely.
So, is the ba- the basic share, state share lodging tax, it's a two percent, it is taken as a credit against the. Six point five percent the sales tax rate. So. We could, it's it's two different, two different ways to do it, it's either a T P A or increase another two percent.
So the lodging tax, my standard of lodging tax was, you have sales tax, six point five percent. You collect that on whatever sales taxes, well, you send it to the state. If it's a tourism related item, they kick two percent of that back to you. If you have a hotel, hotel tax of two percent at the top of that, you collect eight and a half percent, you send it to the state. They take four percent back to you, and that's the number that I use when I typically do my investment analysis. So I believe you can increase the lodging tax, but I think there's a sunset on that, I think it's hard to increase.
That's, I remember seeing that date and then it's unfortunate I didn't do it sooner because of that, the date is coming up too.
So, I, you know, we didn't, we had a hard enough time, just getting people to come and meetings here. So, I want to kind of generate more funds.
Well, uh, just for thought, and you know, we could bring it back for for the discussion if.
We should put a tourism promotion area in place. That requires sixty percent of all of the entities that are going to collect the assessment petition. I have the documentation, if I can give it to you, you can take it, you can. I see, George.
Um, so, and I was just, I'm glad you mentioned that, Tom, cause I was just reading the language. And here is this, you know, formation process to establish T P A lodging businesses within the proposed area must petition a local legislative authority. Signatures from operators representing sixty percent of proposed charges, which I'm assuming are other hotels, right?
But they, I believe it's hotels with one of.
Okay, so there is, uh, okay, and that, cause it's not very explanatory on here, you know, it's a little, not to say confusing, but it's not.
We tried, we tried to get, and I personally tried to get uh at one time. Air Bridge, across the way. Silverstone Light.
Yeah.
Try to get one of the two of them to agree, they add that to what I have, that's sixty percent. I had a couple three, then I went, yeah, they they just didn't trust it, said it's always somebody different. Or, but, so, yeah.
Well, isn't this owned by somebody decent, like, did it change ownership?
Yeah. Yeah, we just, I just met the gentleman, Silverstone. Um, which they're over forty minutes. Okay, I could probably get him, I'll reach out to him. Yeah.
If you want to add to this committee, you need to add one of you to collect here.
Yeah, and he may, he may, he may be willing to join. Cause I talked to him a little bit about that, cause we were talking to him about some other things, um. So, yeah, let me reach out to him.
Okay.
Yeah, cause he like, it's a great resource.
All right, so we got some homework, um, next item, items from committee members.
I was actually gonna ask about the vacancies, and so we, we already talked about that, but do you have, I guess, recruitment?
So, yeah, I mean, we mentioned it as much as we can in council, uh, there's been some.
However, that works.
Some advertising also on the city Facebook and website, it's always there. And I'm always trying to get somebody on board, right, so. Um, there's two vacancies currently for a payer and a user. So anybody involved in in any organization, you know, that that qualifies to give funds. If you guys know anybody that wants to serve, wanna have, get a hold of Jackie or city clerk. And then she'll help you through the application process. Well, the other one is the payer, the taxpayer, and that's been a little bit difficult, but maybe the city manager wants to have that conversation with the.
Yes.
Owner over here, you can. I, it ha- it can be a manager, right? It doesn't have necessarily.
It doesn't have to be, it's dairy, it has.
Hmm, okay.
I just speaking from experience.
Okay.
Doesn't have to be, because the LTAC committee, you can get that as the manager, all the express things.
Well, then just opens our.
It does.
Opens our, our possibilities to get some money. Um, but yeah, so, you know, anybody?
Um, in Brett's email to the group, there was expressed interest from multiple people that informed group.
Yeah, yeah, um, I'm, I'll reach out to them and see if that's the case. I know she serves in a committee right now, so. Just to be transparent, we would have, have a reply for the LTAC. That's, she she wishes to serve on anybody else. Anybody else ever have any items?
We've done that, and as far as a strategic vision for Sunnyside. I don't wanna say we put a carton of horse, but you're out there, you're in a strategic vision, we really have to be. A document or some, just some.
And that's something, um, we talked about this, this recent council meeting is, um. So what we're gonna do is, in June, on June twenty eighth, the council is gonna need a facilitator, come up with, you know, what their priority is on. You know, that's kind of kind of shaped the first steps of our strategy plan. Um, but we just all need to get together in the same room and council needs to really just tell. You know, really come to a collective of the seven members, you know, what's the vision, what do we wanna focus on? You know, marketing will be a part of that, um, I think economic development and and coming out of that. It's really gonna be a collective effort of business, school district, or city, you know, to come together to. To do that, and I think, once we know council's goals and and vision, you know, we can. Council will have to select, you know, the person that does it, you know, because we're gonna need a, we're gonna need an outside professional to be like the facilitator and the creator of the plan. You know, I don't necessarily want it to be somebody from Seattle, you know, full disclosure, I want somebody that knows. You know, is Eastern Washington and knows our community.
Small town.
Yeah, you know, somebody that if, if they're not from the valley, you know, hopefully somebody that understands the valley and that's worth it. Some people, it's just really, um, so we'll, you know, we'll go through a careful selection process with that. Um, and then, you know, I think business like yourself and hospital is a part of that too. Hospital is such a huge part of it, so I think the collective. Cause I was gonna reach out to you guys, if you want a health fund, those economic developments, that's, I'll be calling it. Um, so anyway, that, that's kind of the vision, anything you wanna add on that, Debbie America, cause I mean, you guys are supporting it.
No, I'm, I'm excited to 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 be part of that, I think it's gonna be at the community center, I'm not sure.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be noticed to the public, um, so theoretically, people can come. To the strategic, it's open to the public on the twenty eighth, uh, we'll probably start in around nine. Uh, we'll have a facilitator. Mr. Casey, I should bring his first name. Um, he does great job facilitating, you know, the charts up all in the base, and it will be, it'll be a lot, it'll be a long day, so, you know. You know, business under city there, and I want. Have something to say.
Yeah.
Easy, you're on the spot, it's gonna last, it's a city council, but it's a council, unified enough to, yeah.
I think so.
Definitely, yeah.
Um. Last year, I would say a little different, but the, we've, we've come a long way.
You guys are.
Yeah. So, items from staff, anything else?
No, it's just, uh, you know, we continue to work hard and, and, Tom, I'm the man of this to get with you. To talk, talk a little bit about how we. Tell this consecration. I'll be reaching out to you soon.
I have a good idea.
Yeah, no, cause I, um, and just having the conversation today with the folks over. That are right here, it's this little. Bed and breakfast. Of all the stuff that you're doing and, uh, cause you know, I'm searching around for story ideas and, you know, getting. Semi conversation with them, one of their, one of their largest, when it warms up, people come to drink wine. Bike ride, which I was really surprised, so bike riding is something that people will come to Sunnyside. I guess they'll stay at the bed and breakfast, you know, that sometimes walk to the wineries on it and grab their bike, you know. Uh, yeah, so something, you know, I'm discovering something new in Sunnyside every day now. And we've got some great nice bike trails here as well, so, you know, some of these undiscovered gems and, you know, as well, uncovering in Sunnyside, so. You know, bringing those to life will be, uh, will be pretty exciting, so, you know, and how, you know, and obviously a great place to stay is a huge part of that.
So you have hundreds of miles of state roads, but there are no traffic.
Yeah.
Just watch out for the dogs.
Yeah, it's another thing we're working on, we're gonna, Monday night, we're gonna talk about the dogs, you know, and we got some folks coming. County's gonna come, got some community stakeholders, just, we gotta figure out. The biggest challenge with that, not to off track, but um, from marketing, but it's really truly, it's gonna be a regional effort, and so fix that.
I have a question, Tom, I I forgot to ask earlier, um, I know in the past, in Roger Brooks video, there was a map. That was provided to people that stayed at at the area all time. And do you still have some sort of map that provides like different points of interest?
I think that's part of collateral material that the folks who meet Japton together for us, I think.
The pamphlet?
Yeah, okay, so it's an attraction, now, you know, the issue with it, it's static, so if something was new. Manager was printed, it's not in there, and if something went out of it after it was printed. It's, it is in there and it doesn't have the same, that's a, that's a downfall to print material. But there are enough businesses that have longevity here, that I think if you. Spread it around, I think it'd be.
Yes, okay.
Why not?
Cool, um, future agenda items, I don't have any, but I'm sure you come up with some on May. So, when do we wanna meet next?
Well, future agenda items, I think we have talked about the T P A.
Okay, so we could do that.
So, Tom, are you thinking, we just need one hotelier?
I have eighty two rooms, I wanna say there's. Something, that's a Silverstone. Yeah, it's delicious, I think there's fifty or fifty five, so just do the math. What are you gonna do this, yeah, one of those two, yeah, I think I'm together. Have to have the sixty percent.
Yeah, cause then the T P A allows you to go on tour, that's many, which is five bucks or.
If you want, yeah, and obviously, but I would start at like two, two thirty even.
Does the LTAC board set the rate for the hotels, or does the hotel have the option?
No, the, the T P A is set by. And so this, this, the council, yeah, I would, I would assume it would be incumbent on us to make recommendations, because also along with the allocation.
That's what I figured, I didn't, it would seem dangerous to get a hotel like the magnitude of.
Zero.
Yeah, you know, not that we don't trust you, Tom.
Well, there's hotels that actually have a five dollar surcharge, just a five dollar surcharge for a little while.
Yeah, go to, go to Seattle and get a hotel, we've had one, it's like.
It's not quoted either, so you, you, you might be quoted one thirty nine, and then you give your bill and. That's one forty four.
Uh, it's just.
We really stayed the night.
All right, so yeah, the city manager, if you can get us more information on that, and, um, please, if you get in contact with that.
I definitely, I definitely will.
Um, okay, so now set a time for future meeting. What are we thinking?
It's still at thirty.
Well, each, um, each time we've set a time in this meeting, we don't usually uphold it. So, um, when I propose that we follow up with Jackie to set a time, that's usually agreeable. Or I don't know how you wanna do that.
And we could, and we could set up at least a month, we wanna meet in in June or July.
Well, June are available, July, right?
Yeah, I would prefer June, just because July is very busy.
Okay, so I'll get with Jackie and, um, we'll go through the same process and, you know, date, talk for that.
And I think that if the city is gonna go through a facilitated focus. I, it probably wouldn't hurt for us to provide something, leave the documents, you can consider, as part of your time. We came from a lot of taxes. And, cause I'm not gonna be, I'm not gonna be in way. But if we gave them something that, here's, here's priorities that we have, if it makes sense for the city of Sunnyside.
So I think this, this meeting that we're having is gonna be June, June twenty eighth.
Yeah, so we should be before that.
Yeah.
If we give them six or seven bullet points.
You guys, uh, wanna make some bullet points and we could, we could, uh, discuss at our next meeting and, uh, put it together for, for that meeting, for council. Right, so there's, uh, nothing further to discuss during this meeting at three twenty seven P M. Thanks, John.